All right, good afternoon, welcome to this evening's meeting. We're going to have a moment of silence for our invocation be followed by the pledge of allegiance, and if you would, please, please keep in prayer Congressman John Lewis' family as well as C.T. Vivian's family who are giants within the civil rights movement and did so much for our, for this country and people of color. Also, I might ask for continued prayers for our, we lost a member of our family, a firefighter, firefighter Bolton. He was in an accident and he passed away, so please keep his family in prayer. If you would, please stand with me. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we start on our agenda, I'm gonna conduct roll call Commissioner Demont Davis.
Present.
Commissioner Felicia Franklin Warner.
I'm here.
Commissioner Gail Hambrick.
Here.
Commissioner Sana Gregory, she did call in and she was, is not able for our personal reasons to be in attendance this evening. Madam Clerk, we have four commissioners present with Commissioner Sana Gregory being absent.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the July 21st, 2020 Board of Commissioners Regular Business Meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Does any board members have any amendments to offer?
All right, here and now, I'll take a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Next, the board will hear public comments. Citizens will be given three minutes maximum time limit to speak before the Board of Commissioners. State your name and county of residence, residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparatory remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
All right, Representative Valencia Stovall. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Commissioners, Chair and Commissioners and community members. I'm State Representative Valencia Stovall of District 74, and I come before you, the residents and business owners, this evening to offer my departing advice to be bold and make uncomfortable decisions to grow this county. Residents and business owners, you must demand nothing less when it comes to policies being implemented. Clayton has an opportunity to no longer be a Tier One County, but if small businesses aren't sustained throughout this pandemic, Clayton will remain in a Tier One status while surrounding areas continue to bypass us. Restructure of departments are crucial. Just like I brought the International Painters Union to the school system for an apprenticeship program, the county has to also invest more in our youth. They need to trade even more so now after this pandemic. Some may know why others not, but I have decided not to seek reelection as State Representative, but would take my eight years of experience to DC as the next independent US senator. I would be the first black woman ever elected as US senator from Georgia. There are three things among others that I had to be bold and to make uncomfortable decisions as a legislator. The county had been fighting for years for the splash dollars at Hartsfield-Jackson Airport. I used my partisanship relationship to lead the way to ask Governor Nathan Deal for $45 million to Clayton to stopgap, for a stopgap funds due to the loss of the jet fuel tax collection. But a permanent solution is needed, which will be at the top of my list. Number two, taking the lead for Atlanta Technical to finally have a satellite campus in Riverdale. Thirdly, taking the lead as an appointed chair of the House Study Committee for the revitalization of the state farmer's market for money to be put in the budget for maintenance and repairs of the 50-year-old buildings. And most significant for our county, the signage is changed that now reads Atlanta Clayton County Produce Terminal Market, which is our due justice and recognition across the state. Of course, there is more, but time is limited. Nobody in this state can dispute my dedication to Clayton County. Those are real-life examples of being bold and making uncomfortable decisions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and citizens of the county.
Thank you, Representative Stovall, and thank you for your service.
Yes, can I ask?
Commissioner Warner.
Thank you for your service. And first of all, now, I never forget when I first ran for office, you sat down and spent over an hour with me, helping me to understand that we must always focus on policy and procedures in order to move our county forward. And thank you for all of your efforts, especially the farmer's market and that $45 million in order to sustain ourselves. Thank you so much.
Timothy Von Dell Jefferson.
Timothy Von Dell Jefferson, Unincorporated, Clayton County. Good evening, Chair of Commissioners. I had an embarrassing episode last week, and I addressed this issue prior to, and I think there needs to be a sense of urgency. I had a client to fly in from Houston to look at potential property and relocating here. Now escorted by Clayton County official on a tour. As soon as we pulled up on the property, it looked like somebody had dumped an entire apartment, mattresses, sofas, all of these things. Ironically, that was not in Clayton County, but it was in the city of Morrow. So as we look at the low-hanging fruit that the citizens can visibly see, keep Clayton beautiful should start moving forward immediately. I think that while we are waiting for certifications in certain aspects of this and the Metro-South CDI is moving forward in the cap county, I think that we can establish a littering program. Secondly, there needs to be some code changes. I went into a mom-and-pop gas station the other day. The bathroom was absolutely horrendous. Now, they're also serving food, so I don't know if we need to look at that policy and put that under the health, for health inspections where they get a grade, because they are not held accountable to the standards that's necessary to live in a civilized society. Now, as, as I move forward on this thing, and we have commissioners, and we have four districts, I drive around the county, and I know the commissioners drive around the county, and we see an abundance, an abundance of weeds, overhanging trees, timber that has fell down, has been sitting there for years that has not been picked up. Beautification is very, very critical. As we go down 54 into Fayetteville, they have a standard. Beautiful. We go up north in Apparita, they had a standard. It's beautiful. And it absolutely comes down to leadership. As the citizens vote for these commissioners to oversee their district, we are not interested in nobody being on nobody's board. We want the commissioner to focus on our district, whom we elected you for. So with that stated, I would like for, to challenge the commissioners, hopefully I can get some email responses so I don't have to keep reiterating this over again about keeping Clayton County beautiful, so we can possibly add some input to start some low-hanging fruit projects. But I thank you for your time. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Alvin Farmer.
Before I start again, if you would write your minutes as good as you ask for splash, and Mrs. Henriquez, who's an 80-year-old lady from Ghana could read this, it would be better suited. You have requested, and I got three letters, oh, Mr. Farmer, proactive community activist, 24-year Air Force veteran, I have been in harm's way for this country, which I didn't mind. You had your lawyer send me three letters, which cost $0.50 apiece, plus the, the envelope and also the paper that you got. So I put the letter together that the people have come to me and also myself. All lives matter. My life matters. When your police lied and unjustifiably arrested me, we're gonna settle this issue. Sergeant Carter slammed my cellphone on the trunk of the police car that I was sitting in. I want a new cellphone case and screen protector, which I have now. You're taking money from the public defenders, but the chairman is asking for a pay raise and giving money to Lister &amp; Hope, which is a law firm. Why not give that money to the public defenders what's supposed to defend the public? Three years we asked for that model bus stop, and last Saturday they finally got it moved, but we paid for that. In three years, we was in harm's way. I informed you about that, and finally it got it done. Bad conditions at Fire Station Number Six. I found this error during open house, which you let everybody walk through, and I walked through again. The architect of standard installation and practicing techniques, which is for military people called SIP, lives in the metro Atlanta area. I'm gonna try to find this person and bring him to you since you need a second opinion that we did not get a $600,000 product out of that fire station number six, and I'm more concerned because that's the closest fire station to my home. I informed you, and anybody around Clayton County would know, the sensors at the stoplights are not working. If you set that along, you're creating unnecessary emissions. Look at Los Angeles, what kind of emissions they have. Change the street lights in my suburbs, it would make it darker than better. Y'all put LED lights, but you created a problem instead of solving one. No houses in Clayton County, as that gentleman there says, have recycling bins. It was just on TV, ABC News just said that there's a shortage of aluminum cans due to people not being able to go to bars and restaurants. This you can start right now making money. I got a thing right now, $38. I took all the aluminum cans to my recycling center ever and made that from my home alone. County vehicles not using head, tail, or signal lights, and then using vehicles for personal shopping. Why don't they go to this place prior to coming to work, because that's what most people gotta do? When the chairman's secretary disrespected me twice, the second time Officer Hellman Off the Wind were present during this event.
Your time is up, sir.
So I will leave this for Commissioner Warner, both of these papers, and she can pass them on to you, issue so choose.
Just set them right there. Another point of clarity for you is the, no money was taken away from the public defender's office. Their budget is the same as it was last year, so they were never deprived of any money.
Does suppose they need more money?
Thank you, sir. Dr. Lawanda Filomig. No, only one of you can approach the podium. The rest of you can stand right there in the aisle, please.
Greetings, Mr. Chair, to your colleagues and all who is in their respective place. I want to first take a time to say thank you, Mr. Chair, for some assistance you gave us up in Forest Park, Georgia, and Clayton County. I'm here to stand today with the next generation, which is the youth that is street, that is filed by Ms. Sherwood Austin Atwater. On July the 10th, I went to the courthouse to submit an application to do a demonstration. We do not want to protest, we want to do a demonstration. As you can see, that we are standing in bereavement at this moment with C.T. and John Lewis. My youth are coming to me to ask me how can their voice be heard? And I'm very advocated when it comes to my elders and my youth. I ask you today to listen with your heart and search your heart. Back in 1950 to 61, we all was children. We was out playing ball or playing jetstone, and we got a call in the house that Martin Luther King had just been shot. Put yourself in that place today, when these children listen to hear C.T. tell them John Lewis has passed. They have a voice, they want to be heard. We will follow the CDC rules and regulations. I'm here with my gloves, I'm here with my mask, I'm here to stand with my community children. We need your assistance in, in order to pass this on. I have the elders who will join in with it. We need to let our children come out with pride and dignity to express their feeling so they won't empower themselves with so much emotion and not be able to be heard. Second, at least, this is a foundation that is started by Ms. Atwater. The title is starting with the root and ending with the branch. We all have started with a root somewhere in our life. Today, I need each and every one of you to listen with your heart and also hear these children hum or cry. They want to stand for what they are believing. I recall in the days when I was young, and I got certain calls and had a voice, but our elder people would not let us go. They sent out the clergy. Today, I stand, I stand firmly to support our children and our community, our next generation. I thank you, and I'm going to yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ma'am, can you state your name for the record?
My wonderful line man.
Okay, thank you.
May I please leave this for you, Mr. Chair?
Leave it right there, ma'am. Thank you, thank you so much. Jasmine Shavers.
Greetings, am I allowed to?
Yes.
Okay, great. Hi, my name is Jasmine Shavers, and on July 12th, I unfortunately witnessed between the hours, the hour of 9:00 and 10:00 PM, what ended up being the fatal death of a young man hit by a vehicle. I believe that the solution to that issue is getting lights on Flint River Road. There have been several incidents, and if you, my mother has lived there since '07, so it has been dark, that area has been completely dark. And it wasn't until then, I don't know the young man's name, however, I hope that I'm honoring him by bringing this to you all. So I called, I made the phone calls, and I do believe that the, that street needs lights, because after Wesley Park, it goes black. And then the fact that the construction has been going on for so long, I understand it's state-funded, so it may take time. However, we need something efficient, because it's between a lot of residential homes, it's a residential area. I live off Flint River, my mother lives off Flint River, and the fact that I saw that, that could have easily been my brother, who is of the high school age of the individuals that tend to walk between the residential areas. And so those things are the issues that I came to address. Give my time?
And let me say this, we share your concern.
Okay.
You're absolutely correct, and we have earmarked money in our splash funding to get lights for that roadway. One thing we have to make sure that we're cognizant of is that, because it still is under construction, is for us to put a streetlight there and then have to move it again down the road.
Yeah.
But yes, we are looking to do all that we can do to make that area as safe as possible, and streetlights is a must, we have to get that done. So you, your words are not falling on deaf ears.
Okay.
We're going to work towards that end. In the meantime, we just need to make sure that we are trying to encourage those, the people who live in that area to try to travel that roadway as safely as possible.
Okay, thank you.
No, thank you.
The Chair, before you leave, ma'am, hi there. Thank you for coming, I know you can't see me because I'm virtual.
Yes.
And thank you for giving me a call. I want you to know that as the Commissioner, that's been one of the things that I have pushed since I first got in office, and I will continue to push it, and Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna ask that we submit a timeline that it's gonna be done, because one of the things that the citizens in that area have brought to my attention as their Commissioner, is that this road project has been going on for a very long time.
Very long.
And everything I can as Commissioner to have a meeting with GDOT as well as with our Transportation and Development Director, and I too still have some concerns that I believe I forwarded to you. So thank you so much, ma'am, for bringing it to our attention. Again, I'm gonna ask for a timeline for it to be done, so that we can be able to serve the citizens of the Point-South Flint River area.
And we'll definitely work.
And furthermore, one other quick note, I want you to know this, I want you all to please make sure that we monitor that progress, because there's a lot of that road that has been completed, some of the road has not, and there are not necessarily standards or means put in place for people to pass the areas where construction is still taking place. I believe that GDOT has forwarded that to us, and I have not seen it implemented. So I'm gonna look forward to that timeline. Thank you so much, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Also, when I did my research, the, the project is supposed to end next week, but based on what I have seen, it doesn't look like next week is coming, which then prolongs us from efficiently being able to make that road safe.
And that's why we can work towards getting a timeline, but, but again, so many other variables come into play. We had Corona, that shut down a lot of things.
Absolutely.
We've had inclement weather, that affects the length of the project as well. So it's not, I'm not making excuses, I'm just telling you that that can prolong the time, but we will work towards making sure that we nail down a more definitive timeline.
Yes, sir. I mean, and last note, there has, the construction has gone on for a while.
Yes.
And even when I had my first job at Six Flags, which was a long time ago, so, yeah.
Thank you, ma'am.
But thank you.
Thank you. Clarice Shavers.
Bringing forth Commissioners, well, address health. As you know, that was my daughter that just came up, and the Commissioner kind of already addressed the timeline that I was gonna ask about putting as far as the construction. It's also another thing I would like to bring up as far as making, the gentleman indicated, making Clayton County beautiful again, the, I don't know if they're low-income homes, I live off of Flint River, closer to Point-South Meadow and the subdivision Wesley Park, as my daughter just previously mentioned. But on Flint River, the trash is a, is a sort coming down the road. My daughter just bought a townhome in that vicinity, so I don't know. I was going to address it with the people that probably owns that area, but I thought it would be better just to come to the board and see if I can, if, you know, we can come together. I personally have a nonprofit organization, and what I try to do is I try to bridge the gap, whether it be resources, educational for the youth, or whatever the community may need, to kind of like patronize ourselves within our community. So I didn't know if I wanted to address these people myself or come to the board and ask you guys assistance, because I did mention it, they had a trash monitor that was eliminating people coming in and emptying their trash on their, on their premises. However, I believe it's the residents that's actually living in those, like I said, I don't know if they're low-income or not, but nevertheless, coming down Flint River, you can't help but see the overflow of the trash that's on the outside area, and it's definitely facing where you can't help but see it coming within traffic. It's been going on for a while. I've been owning my home since '06. I raised my kids over there, they have been graduates of Monday's Mill High School, so also the, like I said, I won't even bring that up because Commissioner did say she would put a timeline and will be monitoring it, but I've raised four kids over there. They're all grown now, so, and the construction is still going on, so that, that gives the community an idea of how long. Also want to address, in my 33 seconds, about Independence Park, I don't know what the up and rising ideas are for the remaining of the community, but if we can get more literature out, so we'll be more up to date about what's going on versus, the meetings are great, but more communication and literature in our community would be awesome.
Yeah, so just a couple of things. Of course, when you talk about more information being disseminated, we do have a Engage Clayton Initiative that we make sure that we put out pertinent information into the community. You can go to our website, our social media sites, as well as TV23. When it comes to the overflow of trash and so forth, we have an application that's called Click Clayton, where you can take a picture and send it in and any notes attached to it. That's monitored every day, then we can get a crew out as needed or take whatever action as we need, as those, as that information comes into, into that office. So those are just a few. And never hesitate to reach out to us, I wouldn't always say go to your neighbor, sometimes people don't take kindly to that. But as your government, you can always come, you can contact me at my office on, no Commissioner Warner is accessible, so just, and COO, Mr. Dietrich Stamford, be only too happy to accept your calls, and then we can direct your concerns to the appropriate department.
I appreciate that. Thank you for your time.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Looks like Marcus, okay, I can't read your last name, sir, I apologize.
For the record, Marcus Hines. Good evening, everyone in their respective places.
He's from Clayton?
Clayton, yes. To add to what they've said, in the midst of every construction zone going throughout the area, what could have been added since they've mentioned '06, '07? A lot of these areas that were traveling communities have become walking communities in the meantime. So in the midst of all of this construction, there are more people walking now. What about more crosswalks, more, you know, sidewalks to say, hey, listen, we are saying, like you mentioned, be careful? What area can they be careful in when the grass is three or four feet high and it just raining, like you mentioned, inclement weather? I may not want to walk through this heavy tall grass messing up my clothes and my pants because I'm gonna have to wear these again, you know, the next day, the day after. And considering, I understand, be careful, get out of the road, yellow lines, white lines, I, I understand the politics and I understand the placement of cars versus people. But in the midst of this, we're gonna say, we're gonna have to wait three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 years, is it any more, excuse me, any ruin the budget, add money to say, hey, there's a sidewalk to keep you safe out of the road in the meantime? So, okay, a streetlight may be a different budget from a sidewalk, but if you're paving, can we add this little extra cushion on the side of the road to where you don't have to tightrope between a car and this high grass? You know? And the other thing, when we were talking about keeping everything beautiful, it's easy to say, well, keep everything beautiful visually, but what about having to pull up to a stop sign a little further past in Clayton County to see around the road a bush or an extended tree limb or anything, putting yourself in harm, you know? And then you have to pull around that tree branch to see, okay, there's a hill coming. And at night, it's a little better because you have headlights, but assuming during daylight or someone who without a headlight, you're pulling out in front of a car hoping for the best that you don't get hit. That's all I want to leave you with.
Again, Click Clayton, because that is a hazard if there's branches that you can't see around, we need to come out and trim those. So we can, we can handle all of that. If you have a concern, then I advise you again, use Click Clayton. You're talking about sidewalks, you can put in temporary sidewalks, sidewalks cost money. And we're talking about a road widening project. Doesn't make sense to pay thousands or hundreds of thousands of dollars for a sidewalk, and then you gotta tear up the sidewalk when we expand the road even more so. But we have to do a better job, to your point, to making sure that there's a clear passage for the pedestrians, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Your point is taken.
Mr. Chairman, because this is District 3. Sir, thank you so much for bringing this to our attention once again. Please note, again, this has been something I've been pushing forward. Mr. Chairman, I do want to bring your attention to an email that I forwarded to you that GDOT made recommendations. I had a meeting with all of the GDOT engineering staff and our staff of Clayton County. They provided recommendations for safety measures for that road even during the construction period, and I have forwarded that over. And this is part of operations. I have heard people come forth, which I'm so glad that folks are coming forth, but we have to understand that that has to be addressed under operations, Mr. Chairman. So even the timeline, I'm asking you to give that timeline so that we can give it to our citizens. And not to refute you, but please, if you see branches hanging, don't use Click Clayton if they are in the way, call 911, because we may have to get somebody out there on emergency basis, as I had to do this over this weekend, to get it trimmed immediately. Because I know for a fact that Click Clayton at times, if they're not picking it up over the weekend or in the evenings, they won't get it to the next morning, they do a good amazing job, but always dial 911 if you see a branch that is impeding the roadway. But please know, we will continue to keep making sure that we see the attention on all areas of Clayton County that are put forth in other particular areas. So again, that are, um, put forth in other particular areas. So again, thank you so much.
But let me caution you also about calling nine-one-one. Nine-one-one's for emergencies and a branch, uh, you know, just use cautions and common sense when you.
It was in the road, Mister Chairman. We're not gonna go back and forth. My citizens have called me. There have been branches in the road, sir.
We're not talking about branches in the road. We're talking about not being able to see around. But to your, your point is taken, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rob Leatherwood.
Good evening. Rob Leatherwood, Clayton County. Last month, this board approved two new warehouses in our county, one in particular is over where I live in Riverdale. Of all the years I've been attending these meetings, the only time residents have come forward in support of a warehouse were the ones who were selling their land, who could finally leave Clayton County. So personally, it was laughable when I listened to Commissioners Gregory and Hambrick bragging and boast about the positive impact these new warehouses would bring to our community. It was as if we were getting the new Amazon headquarters, and we all know what happened with that. How can these same commissioners validate all the empty warehouses in our county as being old, small, and that is the reason why they are empty? So my question is, why did we ever approve such warehouses if they are now obsolete? Let me remind you that warehouses are not a building block for creating wealth in our community. In fact, it's just the opposite. Studies have shown that areas with the largest warehouse hubs have the lowest per capita income. According to a study back in 2012 by the Impact Project, they looked at community impacts of warehousing. The concentration and proximity of diesel trucks and the warehousing facilities that service them threaten the health of people living and working near busy roads and logistics facilities. The trucks, unfortunately, create pollution by emitting small toxic particles called particulate matter into the air, and these particles are toxic and dangerous. Particulate emissions contribute to health problems that include cardiovascular disease, cancer, asthma, decreased lung function and capacity, reproductive health problems, and premature death. And residents in District Two and other areas of Clayton County already have to deal with pollutants coming from the airport and airplanes. So in addition to warehouses and these trucks in our community, all we're doing is compounding the situation. Beyond the health threats from the transportation of the freight, warehouses are also associated with negative impacts on residents' quality of life. Residents often feel a sense that they are losing their community to encroachment by these warehouses and are kept in the dark about what is actually being stored in these facilities. There's also safety concerns as residents now have to share the road, not originally designed for such heavy vehicles, with these trucks. And that warehouse centers also deprive local communities of land that could have been used for future green space, schools, public buildings, new residential retail and commercial centers. Looking at the agenda for tonight, the impression is that Clayton County is only good for gas stations and warehouses, especially in District Two. Those are the last things we need to continue adding in our county if we want to grow and compete with the other counties in the metro area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, that concludes Publican.
Next, the board will consider the consent agenda.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second? Uh, second, the motion. Are there any questions on any of the items? Here are none. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Issue unanimous.
Next, the board will consider the board appointments. There are two board appointments.
Yes, the first is to the Green Space Land Trust Board. Uh, we have two outstanding appointments that need to be made. Uh, the members will be appointed and will take, uh, their seats immediately, and their seats will expire on June sixteenth of 2024. Are there any recommendations?
Mister Chairman, uh, Hambrick speaking. I would like to hold that again until I find out more information because that's the question I'm getting from my potential, um, appointees, is to, you know, really, what is that board about? So I'm still researching, trying to find a little bit more information. So I want to hold that to next meeting.
Yes, ma'am. Let's, let's, let's just hold until I advise you to put back on.
Okay.
So until I advise you otherwise, let's just hold. Unless somebody else had a, uh, recommendation. There are two positions.
No, I think Commissioner Gregory had asked for the same, uh, information that Commissioner Hambrick is asking for as well.
Okay. Uh, next board appointment is to the Library Board to fill the term of, uh, Ms. Lily Golden. Her term expired on June thirtieth, 2020, new term or appointment will begin immediately and will expire June thirtieth, 2023. Any recommendations?
Uh, yes, Mister Chairman and Commissioners, I would like to recommend Ms. Carolyn Boone to be on the, uh, Library Board. She has agreed to accept the, uh, appointment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, promptly moved and seconded by Commissioner Davis. Those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed, issue unanimous.
Mister Chairman, the last items of the agenda are zoning hearings. Citizens may speak for or against an item that is considered by law to be a zoning decision, and each side will have ten minutes to present its case. In the event there is more than one speaker per side, speakers must divide their time in order to complete their full presentation within the ten-minute time allotted. When the time runs out, the speaker will be expected to immediately cease speaking and to leave the podium area. Applicants or citizens speaking in favor of an item shall speak first. Applicants in zoning ordinance cases shall have the right to reserve time for rebuttal. Opponents of a zoning decision item shall have no right of rebuttal. When speaking, speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name, address, and name of any organization you represent. Abusive, profane, or derogatory language will not be permitted. Holding up signs, clapping, and yelling to show support for or opposition to a speaker will not be permitted, but a show of hands or quietly standing will be permitted to show support for or opposition to a speaker's position. The first zoning hearing is BLC two thousand two dash zero zero forty-three to allow expansion of existing quarry. This is in District Number Two. Commissioner Gail Hambrick.
I'll sound for the record.
Yes.
BLC two zero zero two zero zero four three, CUP. The applicant, Florida Rock Industries, Inc., on behalf of Rockland LLC, is requesting a conditional use permit to allow the expansion of an existing mineral extraction and processing facility. The subject property is currently zoned HI-heavy industrial. It's located at fifty-six ninety-eight Highway eighty-five. The parcel ID is identified on the agenda. The subject property contains six to one-point-six-two acres of land with approximately one thousand nine hundred and fifty-two feet of frontage along Highway eighty-five. Again, this is in District Two, Commissioner Gail Hambrick. Staff recommendation is for approval with four conditions. This item was tabled from the last, from the last meeting. The zoning advisory group recommendation was to approve, to approve with the same four conditions, and the conditions are listed on the agenda.
All right, is the applicant present? Please take the podium, sir.
Mister Chairman, thank you. I'd like to reserve a minute.
One minute.
Good evening, Chairman Turner and Vice Chairman Davis and Commissioners. My name's Clay Massey. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Florida Rock. We've got two conditional use permit applications for the expansion of the existing, uh, Forest Park Quarry. Uh, it's a granite mine that's been in the county, uh, since the nineteen fifties. It's one of only two active quarries in the county, and it is an essential source of crushed granite, uh, for the economic development within the county. Uh, it's proximate to, it's, it's run by Florida Rock's, uh, parent company, which is Vulcan Construction Materials. You've probably seen the signs for it on Lees Mill, uh, Road. Uh, this is an aerial photograph, uh, of the area where the quarry is located. You'll see it in the bottom right-hand corner. That's the existing Forest Park Quarry. You'll see that it is proximate to, uh, industry, to the airport, uh, and to the major transportation infrastructure within the county. The only other quarry within the county is just across Highway eighty-five. You can see it here in this aerial. So it is next to another, uh, another quarry, the only other quarry, which reflects, as you'll see, the, uh, the intensity of use, uh, of property around the quarry. Uh, I mentioned that it is a, uh, essential source of crushed granite for the county. Crushed granite is used to make concrete that's used to make roads, maintain roads and bridges, to make homes. I think the average home, uh, requires four hundred tons of crushed granite, uh, to make retail centers, to make industrial complexes. All of this requires crushed granite. And crushed granite, the source of it needs to be proximate to where it's used. It's, uh, something that's very transportation cost-sensitive. It is a high-bolt, low-volume commodity. So if transportation costs become too high, it becomes uneconomical to use. At distances of thirty to fifty miles even, it can double or triple the cost. And if distance is lower than that, it can still make the cost of the product to the end user uneconomical. Uh, by not having a local source, you would have, well, by not having this quarry, you would have one quarry left. And the other quarries in other counties are already supplying the demand that is put upon them for their communities. So by eliminating a, uh, a source of crushed granite, you would be increasing the cost, not only through transportation costs, but on demand on existing quarry operations. And also by transporting the commodity, the crushed granite farther distances, you're putting grayer, greater burden, greater wear and tear on, uh, the county's roads. The quarry's been there since the nineteen fifties, as I mentioned. We need to expand the quarry because, uh, we had originally planned to go north, but we found that, that we had quality issues, we had a, a fault issue, and we also had an issue of where we're going to store the overburden. It just, it, we, we can't move north. So we own the property here, which is the subject property, tracks A and B, uh, and that is the property that's the subject of, of our application. There are between twenty-six and thirty-two million tons of, uh, Class A quality granite on the subject property that we need to access to extend the life of the quarry. This Class A granite is what's required by GDOT, uh, in order to use it for roads and bridges and things that the county needs and the area needs for, uh, future development. The, the mine that we are asking to be permitted through the conditional use permit has already been approved by the Georgia EPD. The surface mining plan has already been approved, and so it's just the conditional use permits issued by the county that we need. It's, uh, regulated and will continue to be regulated by the EPD for all environmental purposes. They've done an environmental review. They've approved. So here's a photo, uh, or an aerial drawing of the, uh, of, of, of the site plan and the pit. We are going to, um, implement a hundred-foot buffer around the quarry, which is twice what the zoning ordinance requires. We're putting a berm along the south edge of the quarry property to provide further protection. We will not use Highway eighty-five, and this is a condition we've agreed to, for any transportation or sales of granite. It will only be used as a service entrance and employee entrance. Uh, and we will be, uh, transporting the granite by conveyor, uh, over to our existing, uh, processing plant at the current park. You will see that the, uh, surrounding, uh, zonings and uses are predominantly heavy industrial. But one issue that has come up and that we've, we've talked with Commissioner Hambrick about is, of course, we've got to blast in order to access the rock. The blasting activity at, at the quarry is heavily regulated by the State Fire Marshal. We have to report all of our blasting data, uh, to the State Fire Marshal, and it is monitored by that office. We only blast twenty-four times a year approximately. Each blast lasts about half a second. Doing the math, that's about fifteen seconds a year of blasting. We also have a consultant, uh, who submitted a report for our application, uh, at Vibertec. Vibertec does the size, uh, size, um, demographic, uh, monitoring of the, uh, quarry operations. Anytime that there's a blast, that, that data is, is provided to the State Fire Marshal. In the report, um, you will see that they, uh, they state, they find, looking at five years of data, that the vibration level is well within the state guidelines, uh, and for safe blasting levels, and, and it does not pose a structural or even cosmetic risk to, uh, buildings located near the quarry. Same for sound. It's referred to as air overpressure. Uh, same finding. No risk to adjacent properties for nearby property owners. There's no other economically viable use for the property. Back in two thousand and two, two thousand and three, uh, the surface soil was removed by a different operator. It was, that soil was used to expand the, the airport. Right now, on the majority of the property, it's exposed granite on the top. You would have to bring in millions, millions of, uh, cubic yards, uh, or tons, excuse me, of surface soil to get enough soil to develop it for any kind of industrial purpose. It's just surface granite. Also, the rest of the property is in a flood plain. So you can't use the property for any other purpose. And you will see that we've submitted some reports from an appraiser. Uh, we're paid, uh, appraiser finds that, that it cannot be put to another use. Majestic Realty, the nation's largest private-owned warehouse developer, uh, and one of the largest south of the airport, has looked at the property. We asked them, can you, can you develop this for any, uh, industrial purpose? And they said, no, you can't do it economically. Uh, the quarry, uh, we submitted a report from Georgia Tech. Uh, we've got twenty-five employees. We've got, uh, two-point-four million dollars in household income. To those employees, an operating budget of nine-point-six million dollars. We support another seventeen jobs in the community as well as another seven-hundred thousand dollars in annual household income. We provide local taxes in an annual amount of approximately four-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars. We are a, uh, we are an active and, uh, economically valuable, uh, operation within the county. The staff has recommended approval. The zoning advisory group has recommended approval with conditions that we've agreed to. The, uh, adjacent property owners, the Witherspoons, have submitted a letter in support, in full support of the application. Their property is immediately to the south of our quarry operate, uh, of the subject property. Uh, and just briefly, in the time I have left, uh, the concrete companies, contractors who use our crushed granite, as well as employees have all submitted letters in support of this application. So.
All right. Thank you. All right, the time has expired. For anybody to speak in favor of this applicant's request, however, we will now entertain anybody who wants to speak in opposition to it. Anybody opposed to this applicant's request? Please come forward, sir.
My name is Jeffrey Edwards. I live at fifty-seven fifteen Highway eighty-five, Riverdale, which is, uh, just across the highway from the proposed site that we're talking about. I would like to give you the reasons why I oppose the expansion of the existing rock quarry on a parcel of land that's basically across the highway from my home and even closer to the homes on Orr Road and the large Pine Grove apartment complex. The quality of life for hundreds of people is going to be affected by this. First, I was living in my home on Highway eighty-five before the, before the present rock quarry existed. I have grown up having to live with the problems it has caused when it was almost two miles away. I know firsthand about noise, blasting, and dust that it generated over the years. I can't imagine what it would be like to have it just across the highway. Even though it was almost two miles away, it was like living next to a combat zone. You had the constant drilling of blasting holes with pneumatic drills that sounded like machine gunfire. Then you had the blasting that at times was so severe that it actually knocked things. Then you had the blasting that at times was so severe that it actually knocked things off shelves. Even though, even if the blasting wasn't that severe, you wondered if the house was going to take it without structural damage. Once the rock was blasted loose, it had to be broken into smaller pieces with air hammers, which you could hear running almost nonstop. Then, when the chunks of rock were dropped into the dump trucks, the noise sounded like cannons going off. Imagine hearing that at six or seven o'clock in the morning. All this is going on at the same time that the noise from the rock crushers is being heard constantly in the background. Then there's the dust. You couldn't wash a car without it being covered in granite dust the next day. When my dad would clean out the gutters, he would scrape out the mud made by the dust being washed off the roof. It was a wonder I don't have silicosis from all the granite dust I've breathed in my lifetime. It would make more sense for that parcel of land to be used for something like warehousing or some other commercial enterprise. Also warehousing or something else wouldn't impact the quality of life of the hundreds of people that live on Orr Road, the Pine Grove Apartments, or me, like a rock quarry would. Once this land is turned into a rock quarry, it will be totally worthless for any future development of any kind, unless someone really needs, unless someone needs a really deep lake. To be fair, the noise, the blasting, and the dust have not been too bad in the last few years. I assumed it was because the present quarry was so deep that the noise and the dust can't get out. I just remember the many years when the quarry wasn't so deep, and I don't want to go through that again, especially if the quarry is going to be that close. I'm asking the commissioners to vote this conditional use permit down and to encourage a better use for this parcel of land that wouldn't make life impossible for the people who live near it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak in opposition?
Good evening, Chairman. This is not necessarily opposition. I just wanted to clarify something the applicant did not state on condition number four, what type of eight-foot fence would be installed on that particular property.
He can address that when he comes back for his rebuttal. Anybody else like to speak? All right, sir, come back.
As far as the fence goes, it will be whatever the ordinance requires. That hasn't been specified in the condition, but it's whatever the ordinance requires, of course, we'll abide by that. I'll address Mr. Edwards' comments. We talked with Mr. Edwards at one of the prior meetings, and he has been in his location for a while. And we learned that a lot of what he's describing was a prior operation that was removing the surface soil for the airport expansion. That is not, that was not us. That is an unregulated operation. We are regulated by the State Farm Marshal's office, the EPD, and that's just, that's just not how, that's not how we operate. What he's describing is not a description of our operations. So, just to make that clear. Thank you.
Okay, so just for clarification purposes, my only question is, because he made his point about other use. I heard you say several times, the land is not buildable. For nothing.
You can't, no, you can't build it economically. It's just with the surface soil, the flood plain issues, there's, and we've consulted an appraiser, we've consulted Majestic, and they both said, no, you can't do it economically.
Okay, are there any other questions by?
When did your company begin its operations, if there were prior operations before this?
So, there's the subject property and then there's the existing quarry. So the existing quarry's been there since the nineteen fifties. The subject property, which was the prior operation, that operation was occurring during, which wasn't us. It was in two thousand and three when there was the airport expansion. They were basically excavating all of the surface dirt, and they had conveyors running, probably doing this all the way up to the airport.
There was plenty of complaints about that.
Right. And so that was not our operation. We don't mine surface soil. That was the prior property owner. And so we acquired the property later, much, and we weren't involved in any of that.
And also too, I guess, in regards to the trucking, what are your, what are your standard hours of operation over there?
Seven to seven.
Commissioner Hamburg?
Oh, sorry about that, couldn't get unmuted. Yes, I'm recommending denial of the conditional use permit for this expansion of this existing quarry.
All right, is there anything further on it? Hearing none.
I'm sorry, what was that now?
I was just asking, did you have anything further on your motion?
No, I'm recommending denial.
All right, is there a second on the denial? Is there a second?
Commissioner, where?
Second.
All right, any questions? All right, hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Denial on our applicant's request. Next.
The next zoning hearing is BOC two thousand two dash zero zero four four to allow a smaller expansion to existing quarry. This is also in District Two, Commissioner Gill-Hambrik.
This is a related case. I'll sign the number and the description. The case number being BOC two zero zero two zero zero four four, CUP. The applicant Florida Rock Industries, Inc., on behalf of Rockland LSC, requesting a conditional use permit to allow a smaller expansion of the existing mill or extraction and processing facility. The subject property is currently zoned HI, is located at three hundred Leaves Mill Road, further known as a parcel ID as identified on the agenda. This subject property is eight point two two five acres of land, has eight to nine feet of frontage on Leaves Mill Road. As the applicant indicated, there were two parcels, one larger parcel at six to one acres, this being a companion piece at eight acres. Staff recommendation was for approval. Zoning advisory group is for approval, and there are no conditions on this recommendation.
Is the applicant present? He's left.
Yes.
All right, well, I guess we still got to ask, is there anybody here who'd like to speak in favor of the applicant's request? Anybody who'd like to speak in favor of it? Anyone like to speak against or in opposition? Commissioner Hamburg?
Yes, I recommend denial of this conditional use permit.
Second to motion, those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed? It's unanimous. Next.
The last zoning hearing is BOC two thousand five dash zero zero five zero, QuickTrip to Allow Convenience Store slash Gas Station. This is also Commissioner's, Hamburg's District Two.
Mattel?
Yes, case number BOC two zero zero five zero zero fifty, Conditional Use Permit. The applicant Battle Law PC, on behalf of QuickTrip Corporation, is requesting a conditional use permit to allow for a convenience store, gas station with approximately nine gasoline pumps. The subject property is located at five one eight five Highway eighty-five, which is further known as the parcel IDs, two parcels indicated on the agenda. The subject property is currently zoned general business and is approximately two point one six acres in land area. It has approximately a hundred and sixty feet of frontage along the Atlanta South Parkway and four hundred and forty-five feet of frontage along Georgia Highway eighty-five. The property is located in the Cherry Hills Overlay District. Staff recommendations for approval conditional. The zoning advisory group recommendation is for denial of the applicant's request.
All right, applicant? And state how many minutes in rebuttal you would like. What you need to call?
How many, how much time do I have?
You're going to have ten minutes total. How many minutes would you like to save of that ten minutes for a rebuttal to anybody who's in opposition?
Let's save, let's save six, four minutes.
Four minutes. Set the timer for six.
Michelle Battle here with Battle Law, representing QuickTrip Corporation. We want to go through a quick slideshow with regards to this particular application. For you that don't know, QuickTrip has actually been in existence since nineteen fifty-eight. They started out, they started out in nineteen fifty-eight. We can see here what their initial stores look like when they started out back in nineteen sixty-seven. In nineteen sixty-eight, you can also see kind of the exterior of what their facades looked like back at that time. One of the things that we know about QuickTrip, however, is that over the years, they have really catered to and they take great pride in what they do for their customer base. They are always seeking to improve the quality of experience for those who are entering into their particular stores. And so as we see that, what we can say is that QT constantly is looking to uptick the game for gas stations and convenience stores around them. That is why now what you are seeing in many of the stores that they have throughout the metro Atlanta area are replacements of existing facilities with their new generation three store. When we look at not only the history of QT, but also the employees and what they bring to the area, we're looking at over twenty thousand employees that QT has. On this particular store, they anticipate having a minimum of twenty employees that would be on the roster. When we look at that, we look at some of the benefits that those employees are able to receive. Not only do they get wages that are above minimum wage, additionally, they are entitled to insurance and other benefits that are available to their employees, as well as time off, tuition reimbursement, and a number of other items that make it a very pleasant environment for their employees to work. When we talk about their involvement in the overall community, we look at the fact that they have a focus on at-risk youth and early childhood education. United Way, they give very routinely, they give over five percent of their net profits. A company over eleven, eleven billion dollar company. They give over five percent of their net profits to charitable organizations. They participate in Safe Place, which is an opportunity for those who may be in danger, particularly in an area where we have high trafficking. Those individuals can actually come onto a QT site and get assistance. And they also participate in the Folds of Honor, where they are supporting military families, employees, and their customers. When we look at where QT is in Clayton County, you will see that they have a few stores, but in terms of what we see in the overall metropolitan Atlanta area, we don't have as many stores within the Clayton County area. This particular store would be located, I would say, kind of in between sites where we're over two miles from this particular location. When we look at the site plan, what they are proposing is to have the store at the intersection of Atlanta South Parkway and Georgia Highway eighty-five. Let me take this off. Georgia Highway eighty-five. The store would be facing Georgia Highway eighty-five. We believe that that is the best way to provide for the safety of all those who would be entering and exiting the facility. We have pumps off to the sides of the store, along with the parking, because ample parking for QT is necessary in order to allow for people to not only get their gas needs satisfied, but also we have clean restrooms. That's one of the things that QT is very much known for. We mentioned that one of the prior speakers here talked about some of those issues for other types of gas stations. That is not an issue for QT. We provide not only clean gas restrooms, but additionally, we also provide for food service, hot food service within the interior of the store. The Cherry Hill Overlay District, unfortunately, is not one that is kind of favorable in terms of how you view the setup of a gas station. It actually requires the pumps to be behind the rear wall of the building, which means that you would actually have to get out of your car, come around to the front to get service if you want to pay for something in the store, and then go back to the back of the store to get to the pumps. We have not presented a site plan that shows that mainly because we don't want to provide that type of service to our customers. We want customers to be safe. We want them to be able to see their vehicles. We want the staff to be able to see their vehicles. And we want them to know that safety is priority for QuickTrip. When we look at some of the other stores that are here in opposition to us today, we've got the BP across the street, which services a lot of truck vehicles. That store has been in place for over thirty-two years in the same basic configuration. When we look at the Exxon, I believe, that is on the other side of the street, that store has also been there for over eighteen years. When we get down, a little further down the street, we've got the Sitco that's been there for over fifty-one years, pretty much in the same facade. But that's not what QuickTrip does. We are providing a store that provides not only internal cleanliness and facilities, but also we have outdoor seating for individuals who come and enjoy all of the products that are available within the interior of the store.
And that's your time, now. All right, she, again, the time for anyone to speak in favor of the request has expired. I will now entertain anybody who'd like to speak in opposition to.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the board. My name is Hakeem Hilliard, Hilliard Starkey Law, on behalf of Mr. Saleem Sarfani, who's owner of the Chevron directly across the street from this proposed development. I wanted to say three things really quickly about the policy, about the zoning, and then about the other relief that's being requested. And I'm going to stand down because I know there's another lawyer that wants to speak to the other property, for the, on behalf of the other property owner. In May two thousand and seventeen, I'm aware that the county introduced a new policy that created a conditional use permit requirement for gas stations, convenience stores, and other uses in the general business zoning district. I know it's a policy because within a few months of the adoption of that ordinance, a client came to me who had been spending a million dollars redeveloping his gas station before this policy was adopted, and the county said, you can't get a business license. You can't open your doors. He sat there, closed for nine months, until the county finally conceded with counsel's assistance and said, yeah, we did the wrong thing. We tried to impose this policy before to a client that it shouldn't have applied to. I knew a year later, when the property at five ninety-nine Highway one thirty-eight, which was, I believe, a site that QuickTrip abandoned several years ago, and another client came in and asked for the same request, a conditional use permit and a variance to put the pumps in the front. The county said, yes, we'll allow you to do it. But they made clear in the report at the time that we've got a policy, and the only reason we're allowing you to do this this way, despite the fact there's a proliferation of gas stations, convenience stores in our communities, that it's an existing location. Don't come back here with anything like that again. And we got it approved. And so I was surprised when I came here and saw this application, and I read my good friend, Ms. Battle's staff report, she made good arguments. Because there's other gas stations, this is appropriate for another gas station. It's a hardship to us to comply with standards that require pumps in the rear because it's bad for us. Now, when you develop standards, it's not the business owner. It's a hard, it's always going to be a hardship to the business owner. You all create standards to protect the character of the community. And so that's not an argument. But it was an argument, and it was a very good argument, because she's a good lawyer and I expect that. What I wasn't expecting was the staff recommendation to endorse that argument. The staff said, it's a suitable use at this location because there's two other gas stations next door. It said, oh, yeah, and the Cherry Hill Overlay District requirements are hardships for these gas stations, and we need to let, make it easier for them to come here. The problem with that for the county, and Ms. Battle's going to get up there and say, well, Mr. Hilliard's arguing for a guy whose business is going to be affected, and that's true. But I'm also arguing for the county, right? Because if you adopt this with the recommendations of the staff and what they've said in the report, that if you got a bunch of gas stations, come on, bring some more because it's suitable in that spot. That's exhibit A and exhibit B of every other applicant's going to come in here and saying they're ready. I've been telling applicants for three years, don't go to Clayton County with more gas stations and convenience stores because they made it loud and clear, they're tired of so many gas stations and convenience stores. So what's different about QuickTrip? I don't know. Why do they feel like they have to put the pumps in the front instead of the rear? I don't know. If you go to a property at sixteen seventy-eight Howe Mill Road in Atlanta, they put the pumps in the back. Did it happily. What's different in Atlanta than Clayton County? Why is it a hardship here and not a hardship in Atlanta? So the real issue here, and then the issue of variances, I know you all don't consider the variances, the whether the pumps can be in the rear. Ms. Battle said you have to walk around the building to get in the door. You can put a door in the back like they do on Howe Mill Road in Atlanta. You don't have to do that. You can do it just the way it works. They know it works. Works well, very busy store. So there's no hardship. There's not a hardship. There's nothing unique about this property. They created a lot. They came in here to, to you, saw you in March and you guys combined two parcels of land so they could do this. Why didn't they add more land? And then put two pieces of land together and then say, "We want a variance." Uh, and so this whole request is upside down, inconsistent, um, in- inconsistent with the policy you created on, in May of 2017. It just, this whole happens that I had to deal with it a couple times. Uh, but if you adopted, I want you to know, if you approve this request as it's been presented with the report that's been filed that I got in my hand here, that I've highlighted, you can't stop anybody else from coming. Only difference between Quick Trip and the 10 other folks that have called me and said, "Hey, tell me what happens." They're watching what you decide today. They're coming tomorrow. And when you say, "Hey, we don't want any more convenience stores," you're gonna have to explain why your staff said "Gas stations and convenience stores are good where other gas stations and convenience stores are." And that it, well, yeah, we, we don't, don't worry about the regu- regulation. We know it's a hardship to you to have to comply. Uh, it just doesn't add up, right? And so I'm asking you to deny this application as it's been presented. It doesn't meet the policy that you adopted. The staff has made a dramatic shift in policy position in the last two years, uh, and it's just the wrong thing to do. And it's gonna have an impact well beyond my client and the gentleman who's about to speak on behalf of the BP station, uh, as well. So thank you for the time. I'm just gonna leave a letter and a petition, uh, to make it a part of the record. Thanks very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening to the board and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Bill Piercy. I have the pleasure of representing, uh, Brownsville Enterprises Corporation, which owns the BP station at 51, uh, 98 Highway 85, basically across the street from this proposed location. I want to talk for a few minutes about traffic. What I've brought is a report from a certified traffic engineer, Mark Akampora. I've got nine copies of this that I can leave here for the board's review. There are a number of issues with this particular, uh, site that are traffic-related. One, uh, for those of you familiar with the scene, there are three roads that really come together all at this one location. And folks coming from this side need to merge over three lanes to turn the other side. There's a lot of merging already going on. And then when you add on top of it, Martha Street intersects with, uh, Highway 85 and there's a curb cut there. And that curb cut is directly across the street from where this Quick Trip is gonna be. Now, I understand the Quick Trip site plan is, "Well, you're not supposed to turn left there. If there's a curb cut, people are gonna turn left." Whether they're supposed to or not, that's gonna be a problem. The site plan also doesn't account for the trucks, the fuel trucks that are gonna be coming in and unloading fuel and leaving. And there are significant issues with that as well. So I'm gonna leave these traffic reports for Mr. Akampora and my colleague Lisa Moore Shower, who does a lot more zoning work than I do but whose kid has graduated from high school tonight, um, sent you all a letter outlining in significantly more detail the constitutional and zoning issues that relate. I'm gonna leave those here also, if I may. And then finally, I'm also gonna leave this survey, which shows all the other convenience stores within a one and then a two-mile radius. Right now, there's 22 of them and a racetrack under construction right now. Thank you for your time.
Yes, please hand that paperwork to, uh, Mr. Reed there. All right, anybody else like to speak for or, I mean, and against this, uh, application? Come forward, ma'am. You have about a minute, 30 seconds.
Uh, Commissioner, before you guys even decide...
State your name again for us.
Again, my name is Clarice Shavers. Um, before you guys even decide on another business in Clayton County, um, please run the numbers to see, um, which one of these businesses patronizes the Clayton County citizens because they're taking money outside of our community. Um, again, I've been in Clayton County since '06 and, uh, my oldest, well, the next to the oldest child is 28 and we've been trying to get employment at the different, um, um, Quick Trip, BP. A lot of their employees live outside of Clayton County, meaning our revenue is take, it's not patronizing. Our county is taken outside. So before we decide to put another business inside our community, we want to make sure it's, it's helping our community, that we're patronizing one another and that money is not taken outside.
Well, rest assured, ma'am, every time a business comes, we're asking, because that's all we can do is just ask. We cannot force a business to hire Clayton County residents. But that's, that's a priority for us. We want to make sure that if there's an opportunity for our citizens to be employed, that's what, what we're at, are asking.
We also want to make sure it's, it's, it's a priority to the businesses that we're allowing to come into our community as well.
Absolutely. Thank you, ma'am. All right, Ms. Battle, four minutes.
Um, I'd like to go back to the, um, slide that I had. Can we not start the clock until I get to my slide?
It's not, hasn't started yet, has it?
Um, response to a couple of things. Um, ooh, can't see. Response to a couple of things. Um, the, uh, section of the Cherry Hill Overlay District says, "Gas pump islands may be permitted only when they can be located between the rear of the principal building, not the front facade, the rear of the building, and the rear lot line." I don't see not one single person, none of these attorneys, wonderful as they may be, nor their clients, who would put a gas station pump behind the rear wall of the building. QT no longer has stores in which, um, they don't, that, where they use both sides of the building. The front facade where everybody comes in, um, is the primary entrance. The back is where service entry comes through because that is where their food service items are at. So it is impossible for them to meet this standard and I def- I defy any of the folks in here to say that they could. Number one, we think that, uh, that needs to be addressed in the code, but that's not our issue right here. Hence why we are asking for the variances that we're asking for. Um, second, I believe that this county wants better. It wants better quality. And so when staff looks at sites and looks at what's coming, I have to believe that they're also, along with, um, this board, looking at what's already there and how they want to improve an area. We bring quality into the area. Nobody would be afraid, nobody would be standing up here if they felt that they could truly compete with the QT coming into the area. But I understand what they're saying with regards to, "Hey, we may have other stores or other sites." But every site and we know is judged on its own character. And we believe that we are bringing something that this county needs in this particular location and we need to improve the standards of the gas stations that are around. I don't care if there are 50 gas stations around. If there's sub-quality gas stations, you need somebody to come in and up the standards. Um, second, with regards to the traffic, um, on our site, um, I can go to one back, um, there is a traffic signal, I believe, at the intersection at Atlanta South Parkway. Um, any cars that are coming through would be able to come through Atlanta South Parkway if they're turning left and come through the back. We've got two entrances off of the access driveway in the back, um, that allows for people to come in and have safe passage along with any trucks that would come in. Um, QT is just obsessive about how they work with safety of their residents and making sure that their trucks can come in and off. It is a precision operation. Um, they work this, they have, um, hundreds and hundreds of stores across the country and so that is something that they look at and they make sure that there is no issue with the safety of their, of their customers as well as the ability to have trucks traverse through their sites. And with regards to, um, even just beautification of the site, um, our intent here is to comply as much as we can with the Cherry Hill Overlay. Um, in terms of the look and the style and the feel of the site, um, we will be in compliance unlike the current, um, Exxon, unlike the BP that actually is not in the overlay district. So they don't have to abide by the, um, overlay district requirements. If they want to rebuild their store, they can rebuild it, um, as long as they're, uh, compliant with the current county regulations. But I haven't seen that they've done that. It's not that they've improved the quality of their store. Their store is what it is and it's been that way for over 31 years. So, um, from our perspective, we want to bring something that, um, a- a- achieves the goals in the, of the, of the county to improve the quality of customer service, to improve the quality visually of businesses that are in this area, to service those who otherwise may not be able to stay in this area.
Your time is up, ma'am.
Okay, you're fine, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hambrick.
Uh, yes, can you all hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, first I would like to thank, uh, the young lady that came for with the citizen regarding, uh, people being employed from Clayton County in, in these different stores and all and, uh, one of the ques- anyway. Uh, thank you for that comment because that seems to be a problem from time to time, but I can say from my experience with the Quick Trip on Riveter Road, uh, which is in my district, that we've had, uh, much success with them and with them participating in the community. So, uh, thank you, Ms. Battle, and you can pass that on to them. I appreciate that. Now, uh, there are some conditions and Ms. Fan, will you read those conditions out for me please?
Yes.
Or us?
Yes, there are three, uh, recommended conditions. The first condition says to comply with the, uh, with the site plan. Hold on, I'm sorry, let me make sure I get it right.
While she's doing that, let me ask a question of Ms. Battle. Uh, Ms. Battle, I saw on the pitch call with the, um, the table, the outside tables, will we have that? Um, will those tables be available at this store, the outside?
Yes, we will have the out, we will have the outdoor seating areas. Um, like every QT, we do have those areas and it will be landscaped and with trash cans, receptacles and a clean environment, yes.
Will it have the, uh, I guess canopies or whatever, the covers?
Yes, ma'am. Um, we can show that on the, well, I can't pull up the PowerPoint, but it's shown on the PowerPoint.
Okay. Okay, I, is that one of the conditions, uh, Ms. Fan?
Uh, we have, I'll address the conditions for you.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yes, we have three recommended con- conditions. Uh, the first one stating, "The building facade shall be four-sided brick consistent with the building materials depicted in the elevations submitted on, eh, as part of this application dated May 5th, 2020. Provide a minimum 10-foot wide landscape strip along the frontage of Highway 85 and Atlanta South Parkway to screen the fuel pumps from the, from the right of ways. Any, any variances shall be subject to the approval by the Board of Zoning Appeals. Provide access and road improvements subject to the requirements of the Transportation and Development Department." Those are the three recommended conditions.
Okay, do you agree with those conditions, Ms. Battle?
Yes, we do, Commissioner.
Okay, um, okay, I, I would like to recommend approval of this conditional use permit.
What the...
What conditions?
What the conditions are stated, correct?
Yeah, yes, thank you. With the, with the conditions are stated and with the tables. No, I would like this, uh, approval, please.
All right, there's a motion. Is there a second? Uh, second to motion, are there any questions?
I, I just have, um, one thing, um, to ask. With United Way, I know it can't be something we can add as, make sure Chuck knows, I ask him for a condition, but it's really good to hear that you all do support United Way. But it goes to what, um, the resident, um, just stated a while ago. How can we ensure that we're giving back to Clayton County, um, as, as we move forward? I just want to make, just as a, a rhetorical question to do with as we move forward with consideration other than I think that the community needs to know how you're going to be able to, uh, let us know that you're supporting this community. Um, 'cause we just passed for a new Boys and Girls Club. So I don't know if you need to say anything, Ms. Battle.
Ms. Battle, you got a comment to make?
Um, um, QT wants you all to know that we will work with whatever, um, organization, um, within Clayton and, uh, government to make sure that, um, we are addressing the needs of the community in terms of, um, the, uh, philanthropic side that they have, um, that's associated with QT. So, um, we can work with the Commissioner's office, yeah.
Thank you, ma'am.
Uh, let me add this, um, the, uh, again, the QT on Riveter Road, uh, has partnered with our police department and all. So we have, uh, uh, the coffee with the chief. Uh, we've had a couple of those that were very successful. But anyway, but they do, um, participate in community activities and I appreciate that and I hope it continues and I hope we continue to hire, uh, people from Clayton County.
Most definitely.
Okay, with that being said, again, I, uh, I guess we've done that, right?
Yes, we already got a motion and second. Uh, any other questions? Here and now, those in favor, aye. Aye.
Aye.